About the board minutes is written, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Hearing none, minutes accepted as written and presented. Under legislative updates, our legislative liaison, Mr. Baker, has contacted Senator Ronnie Asav, and he is present with us. He is going to give us an update on current educational bills that are in the Senate, and those things that affect our students here in Williamsburg County. Senator Asav, thank you for being here, thank you for your service, and we now give you time to bring us up to date on the bills.
Girl, well, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everybody, good evening, Dr. Wilder, always good to see you. I quite frankly, Madam Chair, was looking forward to Representative McKnight's presentation because the House has passed its version of the bill, which contains, I think, good news for education. And obviously, to the extent that he brings you all up to date on that, I will just preface my remarks by saying typically, and when I say typically, I'm looking historically, generally, we're able to do a wee bit better than what the House does. And so, I'm hopeful and anticipating that we can enhance some of what Representative McKnight will share with you all when he gets the opportunity to come before you at the next board meeting. And who knows, by that time, we may very well be either deep into our budgetary debate, or may pass it depending on when your next meeting is. And so, to the extent that Mr. Baker continues to monitor everything, and if we progress efficiently enough, and obviously, if there are no conflicts, I'd be delighted to come back and share with you all whatever information that I think might be of some benefit. Let me also say that I did not serve on the Senate Education Committee. That's one of those committees where the longer you stay there, the better the opportunity is for you to get K-12 education. And I've just not gotten the opportunity to do that yet, although I have eased on the priority. And so, the bills that I will mention, for the most part, they are just matters under consideration, bills that have been introduced. Quite frankly, I don't see a lot of them passing this session. What happens in the General Assembly is that bills are typically introduced the first year of session. And if they are not passed and approved by the second year, then they go back and have to be reintroduced again. And so, we have what we call crossover. A crossover is on April the 10th. And so, if these bills that are Senate bills are not passed by April the 10th, then they will not get an opportunity to become law because they can't go over to the House for consideration unless they get unanimous consent from the Senate body, and the likelihood of that happening is almost nil. And so, I'll just mention a couple of things that I don't really consider them to be that consequential, but they are bills nonetheless, and so I'll go ahead and mention them. And as we did the last time, Madam Chair, we'll send what I call the little snippets that we have, that I'm going to share with you all after, in this case, if you might want to do any follow-ups on some of the things that I mentioned.
Senator Asav?
Yes?
Excuse me, Galaxy, which is a program we are using, is asking persons who are on the call to please mute your phones. We do have new feedback, so everyone, please mute your phones. Thank you so much. Senator Asav, please go.
Okay.
Somebody's talking about 11:30, please mute your phone. Can you do it, sir?
No, I can't.
Okay, thank you. Senator Asav, we resume.
Sure, no problem. And I'll try to use up to these. So, one of the bills up for consideration that's in committee is S-923. It's classified as being a youth patriotic societies bill. And so, the essence of the bill is to encourage the state superintendent to allow for attention to be paid to Patriotism Week. And they were just wanting to highlight and make sure that there are programs associated with Patriotism Day, which is September the 11th, and Constitutional Day, Constitution Day, which is September the 17th. In addition to that, there is a Save Women's Sports Bill. I don't think it passes this year, but it's a bill introduced to try to deal with the issue as to whether or not transgenders ought to be allowed to participate in sports that's different from the gender that they were considered by some to be born in. And so, that bill is S-531. S-945 is a bill that would require all of the school board meetings to have a virtual aspect to them, and so that's bill number S-945. Bill number S-674 is a bill that is designed to regulate booster clubs and to add some accountability to booster clubs to make sure, of course, that money is not, on one hand, raised in the school's name and, on the other hand, being inappropriately spent. There's a bill dealing with child identification kits that would essentially require that these kits be made available so that parents can access them on a voluntary basis. The last bill that I want to talk about is a bill that's placed on special order that we are currently debating in the Senate. When we're debating a bill, that means that there are amendments and those kinds of things that will be offered that could alter the bill as it is presented. But the bill is classified as being an education saving accounts bill. I typically oppose all of these bills because I think, for the most part, they are vouchers disguised in a different way. And I don't believe that we can afford to allow money that could otherwise go to public education to be spent privately. You all may recall when Governor Master tried to move $20 billion of the federal money that he got to private schools of the lawsuit filed, and the Supreme Court held that those funds could not be used that way. And so, whether or not, should this bill become law, whether lawsuits can be filed or not, I don't know. But I certainly am convinced that it's the same kinds of arguments that relate to it, that relate to others. But when I look at these kinds of bills, I look to the fact that some of them could be just totally wide open. This is somewhat restricted, but one part about it is that it does not come out of the traditional funds that our public schools would get. So, they've chosen a different pot of money for the money to come out of. It's a phased-in, three-year program where the amount of students that participate are capped at 15,000, again, phased in over a three-year period of time. In order for the students to be eligible, they've got to be either eligible for Medicaid or have some sort of an IEP kind of classification. And so, those are the only students that will qualify. But over half of our children that attend our public schools are Medicaid eligible. And so, it creates a scenario where they can pull from a broad base of students. But it is classified as being a scholarship slash savings account. It is up to $6,000. When we looked at the amounts of money that are paid for private schools, there weren't any schools that charged $6,000, most of them are $14,000 on up. And so, from a practical standpoint, how it would work, I think, remains to be seen. One of the unfortunate things about Columbia is that there are certain parties that have certain agendas, and essentially, they pass bills and they just check the box. And a lot of it becomes a soundbite, something that can be touted politically in certain circles that have popularity. My guess is that this bill will pass the Senate. What will happen in the House, I don't know, I would not be at all surprised if we're not to pass the House as well. Currently, there are senators speaking on the bill. There was a time when Democratic numbers were higher, more difficult, and bills like this passed. Now that the Democratic numbers are down at 16, it is more difficult to stop legislation. And so, that's why my feel is that the likelihood is that the bill will become law. Madam Chair, I do want to talk about a couple of the budgetary things that the House has. I do want to mention a few of those, but I'd like to just pause just in the event there are any questions relating to anything that I've covered or anything that anybody has heard about that they want me to try to address. And obviously, I always say, knowledge is the two kinds. Either you know the answer, or you know how to find the answer. So, to the extent that somebody asks me something that I don't know the answer to, I'm delighted to make a note about it and try to get back with him or on it. So, if there are any questions or anything before I take another two or three minutes to wrap up, I'm delighted to try to answer them.
You will open the floor up for a few questions, and I hear Mr. Darby. Mr. Darby, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Baker told us it was $150 million for school construction. That's only enough to build one school. Is any way we could get more money for school construction? As you well know, many of the buildings in Williamsburg County are old, and this is a poor county, and we don't have the tax base to build a new school. Is there any way that the state can do more for the poor districts like us, you know, in terms of school construction?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Darby, for that question. Last year, we allocated $100 million for the construction of schools and to assist in the facilities. We maintained at that time that $100,000 was a beginning, a drop in bucket. And as you've indicated, is hardly enough to build more than one school. The average cost, as I understand it, to build a school now is around $60 to $65 million. And so, obviously, that's insufficient. Quite frankly, we're encouraged by the House because the last time around, the House didn't put anything for school construction. And so, when it comes to the kinds of efforts that we're launching, unfortunately, it takes time, a lot of times, for the General Assembly to take hold. And Dr. Wilder is very familiar with this, and we talked about it a year and a half ago, that in order for us to address the problem that we've got with the need to build schools, we need a constant revenue stream. We don't need the one-time allocations. We need to know that there's a formula in place where every year, there's going to be a substantial amount of money being allocated for the building of schools in rural South Carolina. And I've been talking about this for a couple of years now. And so, we've got a bill also that's proposed, but the bill has not gotten a committee hearing yet. And so, the likelihood of it passing, not very good at all this year. But we've got to continue to advocate for Senator by Senator to see whether or not we can build some momentum on it. But the design of the bill is to do what North Carolina has done. And what North Carolina has done is that they set aside a certain percentage of their rural revenue. And the rural revenue is placed in an account that's allocated to address the needs of buildings. That's exactly what South Carolina needs to do. The one reason why I'm able to tell all the members of President of District 32 that we're going to get to your road, it's going to take us a while, we're going to get there, is because I know that the gasoline tax has passed. I know that we're going to get a billion dollars every year from that revenue that we will use it to build roads and bridges, and that's in perpetuity. And so, there will be money there to do what we've had to do the same thing as relates to education. And so, I will just share this. There is a facility study going on right now with regard to King Street Senior High because some of us have advocated that we understand the declining of the number of students at C.E. Murray and why there has been a proposal that has been accepted to merge the two high schools. Those of us who are paying attention, we get it, we understand it. What we view as being unacceptable is that students coming from a school that's 70 years old is going to a school that's 50-some-odd years old. And we just believe that it's time to build a comprehensive high school. The idea of who builds the high school, I believe, is the state's responsibility because the Constitution of the United States doesn't say that districts are providing minimally adequate education. It says the state is supposed to provide it. And I don't believe that the minimally adequate education notion that's in the Constitution stops at curriculum. I believe it includes the facilities as well. So, we're going to continue to argue that issue and continue to advocate for a constant stream of revenue and that the state ought to be the ones that will build schools. Now, to this superintendent's credit, and I don't know when the last time this occurred, Dr. Wilder can help me on this if she knows, but the state is actually building a school in the county where the state is paying for it. And that didn't just happen as a matter of happenstance. That happened, I believe, because we've been engaging our superintendent in these conversations that if we wait for our districts to be able to build new schools, we'll be waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. It's the state's obligation, the state has some opportunities. And so, our hope is that we broke the glass ceiling with the building of the school in the county, and that's the beginning and not the end.
Thank you very much.
Does someone else have a question?
And a follow-up to that.
Mr. Hayward?
Senator Asav, in follow-up to that question in regards to the money, is it just strictly for new school properties, or could it be used to upgrade existing school properties?
Unfortunately, and I say unfortunately because I'm not getting what I want. So, unfortunately, it's going to be up to the state superintendent to decide how the money is allocated. The $100 million that we got last year, every, I shouldn't say every, the needy school districts are getting portions of that. And so, I think Williamsburg County, I don't know the numbers, but we're getting a portion of the $100 million from last year. And Dr. Wilder will be able to use those funds to help with the facilities that we currently have. But that's not my desire. My desire right now is to build a brand-new high school. And so, I'm going to ask for enough money to build a high school, whatever is allocated. And the worst that can happen, as far as I'm concerned, is them telling me no.
Senator Asav?
Yes, ma'am?
At this point, my last conversation with Virgil Chambers at Superintendent Spelman was about a week or so ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And right now, based on what Virgil shared with me, we're earmarked for $8 million out of the pot that we currently have. And that's based on, I think, we're, I think it's 19 districts that are really bottom, and I think we're like maybe 16 on that list. We're not at the bottom of the bottom, and we're not going to build. So, right now, it's supposed to be right at $8 million. And to answer that question in reference to the money that was also utilized to help school districts consolidate and also schools consolidate. So, the $8 million that we're supposed to be giving, hopefully, we can get new furnishings, support for C.E. Murray, Avery Millard's new school, and some other options that we can look at.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Wilder, for that. I have heard the $8 million figure as well, and I'm glad that you sort of confirmed that that's pretty much what we're looking at. And so, you know, that's still a nice little chunk of change. And I'd be tickled to death if our school needs were not as great as they are.
Thank you. Any other questions? We do have Senator Asav about five more minutes for you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
So, real quick, I may not need your five, Madam Chair, I solemn script's consent. So, I'll just tell you that there are school raises that are involved, but there's a controversial element to it. And so, it's indicated that there's going to be a $4,000 increase, that the beginning salary for teachers will increase from $36,000 to $40,000. Some of us want to see that higher. But right now, there's a portion that's supposed to be borne by the district. And so, on one hand, we're telling everybody that we're giving you a $4,000 raise, and that we're saddling the districts with this huge amount of money that they've got to pay. And so, that's not what we ought to be saying. And so, we've got to figure out a way to alleviate the burden from the districts but yet give the increase that our educators so rightfully deserve. One of the things that you all are going to see in the budget as well, now, this is the House version, but the amount of money allocated for the charter schools, the EIA funds, is actually greater than the money that's allocated to the districts this year. And the rationale, not that I necessarily buy into it, but the rationale is that the charter schools don't get any, I'll call it subsidized funding, i.e. your funding from the mill region and all of those kinds of things. So, there are no local revenues that go to charter schools, and therefore, their need is greater. But I think charter schools are like a mixed bag to me. And my position on charter schools is that if they're not working, then they're hurting. And so, I have a greater, mind you now, my expectations for public schools are high as well. But if you're going to create an alternative to our public schools, you darn well better be better and give better results. That's just kind of how I feel about the charter schools. So, I'll stop there. I thought that was some good news that we'll add. And I'll just, I guess, just chat just about a couple of things that are a little off-script from education and it's just dealing with the budget in general. You know, South Carolina is doing really well, and this is really to Mr. Darby's point. If I were king for a day, you know, there's contemplation in the Senate that we're going to give a billion dollars back to taxpayers, a billion dollars back. I would hasten to say that the average taxpayer might be able to take his or her significant other and or spouse to dinner. That money can be better utilized, starting a seed pot to build schools. It's just, in my mind, a generational opportunity that we waste. And our challenge with all of this money that President Biden has shepherded to all the states in these United States is that if we're smart, we can utilize those funds in such a way that they can have a generational impact for years and years to come. And so, one of the things that I've been looking at is the flooding that we're having in so many of our areas. And the reason why is because our ditch system, that's what I call it, I mean, it's just antiquated. Our ditches and things were dug 60, 70 years ago, and they worked fine then when we've had hurricanes, we've got droughts. We've simply not been able to maintain those. And so, I think that we need to use this one-time money to dig out our ditches and to create the kind of drainage that we had way back when. I think it will alleviate a lot of the problems that our towns, municipalities are having as well as some of our friends and neighbors whose water going for any place except underneath the highway. And so, I'm just asking that y'all just support the notion that we need to focus on generational opportunities to get things done in order that the money will not just serve the present age, but ages to come. So, that's it in a nutshell, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Asav. We do have other questions, if you want to know about this bill, about students being able to travel across district lines. However, we know that our time is short tonight, but we do thank you for coming, and we will, I'm sure, have you back again really soon. It is the desire of this board that we work collaboratively with our legislators so that we want you to know what we believe is best for our district, and we want you to support those bills, and we are certainly here to support you as well. So, we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much for being here, and you shared a lot of great information. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you for the invite. It's no news to anybody that I believe that teamwork makes the dream work, and that we're all in this thing together. And so, I've got great friends on that board that you serve on. I cherish our friendships, our relationships. I appreciate what you all are attempting to do, and I think that you'll be successful at what you're doing, and we look forward to being a part of that team.
Is there anything, Senator?
I'm sorry, I do have one more question that I'm going to recognize, Mr. Dix, you haven't spoken yet.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes. Senator Asav, I understand that Congressman Clodrum is working on broadband. Is, do you all have anything to do with that, or is that anything that comes across your own?
Absolutely, Reverend Dix, we are so excited and so thankful to Congressmen. But I will tell you that the state was doing stuff before that. Hemingway was actually the priority of the state to get broadband into. And so, Farmers Telephone was way ahead of all of this money coming down from Congress. But given what Congressman Clodrum and others have done, we can now say to the citizens of State of South Carolina that everybody is going to have broadband. No give-fan of us about it, it's going to happen in our entire state. And so, you know, Congressman and I speak, you know, from time to time, and it's been a baby of his for a while. And, you know, if you look back at my campaign literature from 10 years ago, you know, building that kind of infrastructure was one of the key things I believe we needed in order to be able to attract the kinds of business and industry that we'd like to see in our areas. So, yes, sir, absolutely, it's a safety federal and local.
Thank you. Mr. Darby, you have a final statement, a final question?
Quick, not, bus drivers, not just Williamsburg. I know I had some members in Berkeley County that had a big problem with bus drivers, and that's a wealthier district. Is there anything the state can do to increase the pay for bus drivers?
I have a private problem, and I don't know the answer to it, quite frankly, Mr. Darby. I will just tell you that we're very mindful of it. And my guess is that it'll be a part of the debate on the Senate floor. And so, I would just encourage you to stay tuned and to see what we could do to help. But I promise you, we are positive of the problem.
Do you believe in like some of these private companies?
So, you know, the issue of whether or not privatizing things around the state is better or not continues to be a subject of debate. I'm open to those kinds of ideas, but I have to look at the nuts and bolts of it to be able to evaluate it. But those kinds of thoughts have been floating around, quite frankly, for a while. I don't know that I know the answer to it, but I think it's one of those issues that's worthy of debate and attention. And so, I'll just be open to whatever best serves our students and our districts' needs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Senator Asav. Thank you so very much. We will now move on.
Good night, I'll head on to another meeting.
Okay, thanks for being here.
All right, I'll take care of it.
All right.
My Godfather.
As we move on through the agenda, under board items, got a call from Dr. Tiffany Cooks, and she has invited us, Williamsburg County School District Board Trustees, to use the county council chambers for our board meetings. It's where the county council meets, they have a nice setup, they do, I guess it's called broadbanding. And I've spoken to Dr. Wilder about it, and we all think it's a great idea. If you aren't familiar, where county council meets, in the government building there, 201 West Main Street. And so, I'm going to ask the question, if this board is, can we get a consensus that we will begin next month meeting in the county council chambers until our board meeting area is ready?
My question is, this is, this sound system, that is great, you know, it's better than it has ever been, and it sounds real great. you know, um, it's better than it has ever been and it sounds real great, good. Um, it's county council sound system that's good as good, so I have a better one.
Yes. Can I get a consensus or draw your motion? Are we all agreeing to be there?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so very much. So, we will begin to meet at, at 201 West Main Street, uh, at our next meeting, which is always the last Monday of the month. Um, is there a volunteer for the thought for today for our next meeting?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Anything else from a board member that you would like to discuss? I'm sorry, I do have to make one clarification. At our last meeting, we went over the draft for policies and procedures and we are in consensus with every item in policies and procedures, but I was asked to follow up on section BD. B is in boy, D is in dog. And that's under organization of the board. I have spoken to representatives, um, Ms. Stephanie Lawrence, the attorney that worked with us, and I also spoke with, um, Ms. Debbie Elmore, with the South Carolina School Boards Association. We will have to let that section remain as it is. We will still, um, install officers in the November meeting after the election. Their term will not begin until the first of January. That's the way the law is written, our local law. And in that case, if we wanted to install them in January, then we would be outside the law because the law says their term has to begin January 1. And since we do not meet in December, they will need to be installed so that their term can begin January 1. And that's because of the way the law is written. And we cannot change the law. So, I did check and that's why that is the way it is. And if you, on your chart, that is, um, that law was passed in 2017 and it is Act 107. All in favor of section BD? I need a motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that section BD and the board policy and procedures remain that offices will be installed in the November meeting. Their term begins January 1. Thank you so very much. Are there any other? I'm sorry, everybody, all in favor? Please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any posers? Motion carried. Section BD will remain as written. Is there any other input from some, any other board members? Here we go, we're ready for our update from the superintendent and her leadership team.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and other board members.
Good evening.
Uh, Madam Chair, before I discuss the report, I would like to say that on today, uh, we are listening, I should say, Wendy and I listened to the governor's press conference in reference to the, um, teachers' salary. When it, when the information was first here about the teacher salaries, some teachers had a perception that everyone would get $4,000. Well, that's not correct. Um, it would be based upon the state's, um, minimum pay scale and first-year teachers make $36,000, maybe a few dollars. We have to make certain that a teacher without any experience make at least $40,000. And then we have to take each cell that's on that teacher's pay scale and bring those persons up to $40,000. Now, for example, if you, if you do a new year teacher's, I'm sorry, not new year. If you knew, if you do a new teacher's salary for $40,000 and then you have a first, second, third-year teacher could actually make less. So, we have to go in each cell and make sure that each cell is not less than $4,000 because you may, um, what you have been is that you will have a, a first-year teacher of zero-year experience making more than an experienced teacher. So, we finally got that figured out today. Um, during this press conference, um, our governor made it clear that some districts already act that for us all. Well, we're not one of those districts, we gotta go in and fix those cells. So, I think there will be a lot of disappointed teachers across the state thinking that everyone was going to get a $4,000 raise and that is not the point. So, I just want you to be aware of that and kick someone who puts you by it. You can explain to them that, uh, the premise is to get a first-year teacher at $40,000, a minimum of $40,000, and fix several ones in the cell.
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, this time in the update in this packet also include information from the principals. I think you put that in your packet as well.
I did.
So, if you have any questions about that information, I would gladly answer those questions for you.
Madam Superintendent.
Mr. Darby.
There's a recognition from, do I have recognition from the chair?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Superintendent, um, what are the graduation dates for high schools?
Mr. Darby, I, I'm not gonna guess that day, but I get it to, I get all the members.
Wow, okay. How was the transition, the consolidation?
Higher.
How was the transition? The transition, uh, consolidation, uh, like?
The three, City Murray and King Street, that's right.
How was that going?
This question, how's the merger going?
Merge, how was the merger going? Moving of equipment and stuff like that, how was?
Okay, um, the first, and I hate to bring up sports first, but the first group of students, uh, who met together were the two football teams. Uh, the young men got overwhelmed from what was shared with me. Uh, they're excited, um, we have ordered the new uniforms, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I found out that the band students, which I thought was a great initiative on their part, the band students took it upon themselves from City Murray and they have already merged with the King Street High School band. As a matter of fact, um, Mr. Patterson, who's an excellent band director, he's referring to the band now as the merge. So, uh, the students are very excited, working together. As a matter of fact, I was not even aware that the students were already working together until, um, it was in February when, um, as a partner, we had a Manchester parade and I was complimenting the band on what wonderful job they did to the parade. And I said, can you imagine what's gonna happen when City Murray's students come with us? And the kids go, oh, they're already here! So, they've been working together. As a matter of fact, the drum line from City Murray and King Street just won an overall performance this past weekend. So, they're working well together. Uh, we're looking at staff, um, as a matter of fact, um, all the persons from City Murray will be, um, hired because, um, we have one teacher instead of two teachers in, in some of the areas that we normally have two teachers in, but no longer be without a job. As a matter of fact, we're looking, um, for teachers for some of the slots we were not able to fill this year. Other than that, the transfer, the transfer just going well. I just met with Ms. Matt on this past Friday to, um, to begin the process of asking for new bed codes for the, from the schools. Uh, we learned that, um, I found out today that there's a possibility that City Murray may have to get a new bed code because, um, a part of the calculation is if the current number of students that we are transferring to King Street High School, if that number is more than half of the current population of City Murray, I'm sorry, or the current population of King Street High School, that that school gets a whole new freshman in. Everything starts like it's new. Like, the school's gonna keep that same name, but it's like it would be a new organization because of the number of students that will be transferred on the campus. But we will find that out later this, well, actually, this month, this later, or maybe sometime next month, based on the 135th day attendance report. But other than that, um, things are going well. I'm waiting to, um, get the final words from State Department to run the money, draw down, uh, we begin because we need to get new furniture for the respective schools. And, but other than that, things are going well.
Now, let me ask this, and then I'll be finished. Um, as you know, we got problems with recruiting teachers at, at Hemingway High and at King Street High, and we have a teacher cadet class at both of those high schools. So, we can try to encourage some of our young people to go into teaching because some of the young people are not going into teaching now. And so, when I was teaching.
Well, Mr. Darby, um, on last week, I had an opportunity to, um, I sat with three students at the, um, at King Street High School and in talking with three of those students, two of them actually talked about their ambition in becoming a math teacher. And I said, please come back to Williamsburg County. So, we have some students out there who actually, um, want to become teachers.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Um, did anyone have an opportunity to go through the update presented by the superintendent and principal? Do you have any questions concerning the update?
I just have a question, Madam Chair.
Ms. Israel?
Dr. Wilder, how many honors?
Dr. Wilder, how many honors courses do we have at our high schools?
How many courses?
Honors courses.
Oh, thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Israel, and that's, and that's one of the, um, items on the list that we're gonna share with our community as one of our weaknesses and one of our challenges. We have, we have two AP persons, um, certified. So, and I know that's at least two, but however, Ms. Israel, there is a, um, a process that we can, um, if, if a high school, um, does not offer sufficient honors courses for students who are interested in attending college, um, there is a platform with the state, it's virtual. We can, and I think each course is like maybe, um, I'm trying to avoid quoting the wrong figure, but I would say it's less than $500 per course. Of course, the district pickers' courses about students in reference to honors courses, Ms. Israel, because the students could actually, um, get online and work through the state, through their SC virtual program.
Thank you, Dr. Wilder.
And we've had cases in the past where students have actually wanted a certain course and it wasn't available and they've gotten it through SC virtual. But there's a deadline, for example, um, we would have to look like maybe this summer. If there's a course that a child would like to have and that course is not in the district, then we can get that child signed up before the deadline.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Wilder.
You're welcome.
Will students at, um, senior high in Hemingway be able to, like, Hemingway students have tended to be able to use the vocational center, am I right?
Mr. Darby, sit down again, please, sir.
The students at Hemingway will still be able to use the, the vocational center be available for those kids and then tech available for the kids here in King Street is not gonna continue?
Yeah, you asked if they could use the?
No, no, I'm saying the Hemingway.
This question is, will the students continue to use the technical school here in King Street? And?
Definitely, yes.
And the tech, and the vocational.
And of course, Hemingway will continue too.
Yes, yes. A- as a matter of fact, the, um, he will air HPSC course, um, from City Murray has been transferred, will be officially transferred to the technical school because King Street High School is not certified for the HPSC course.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Another question to Dr. Wilder?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not a question, but it is just a, a thank you to Dr. Wilder. Um, I had the opportunity to speak to Dr. Wilder a few, maybe a week or so ago, but I just wanted to share just how Dr. Wilder is on top of things in Williamsburg County School District, how she has a pulse on the students and their well-being in the school and how she is so on top of things and she really knows about the children in our school and has a concern for our children. So, I just wanted to thank her and commend her for the outstanding job, um, that she is doing for our children and with our children because it means a lot to have a superintendent who is that in tune with our children, to know that if she cares at that level, then I know her staff and the ones that work under her have that same care for our students. So, Dr. Wilder, I just wanted to highlight that and commend you for that because that means a lot for a superintendent to be that hands-on. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, um, Ms. Israel for sharing that. And I do, um, compliment on what she had said because you can ask her any situation and she pretty much can tell you right away, the student, the parent, and give you a complete answer.
It's about, they don't think it's coming to our graduation date tonight.
And I noticed from the principal reports and I, I looked, but they are not in, in the reports yet, but, um, I'm sure we will get them soon.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Uh, um, I want to say this quickly. Some of the parents were concerned about, um, with the consolidation. There might be more fights. Is there any kind of program to work against gangs? We know gangs are a problem in our, um, under the surface in all, in schools across the nation. Is there any plans to kind of preempt that kind of thing, make sure that you can't prevent?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, give me, Mr. Darby, give me one second, I promise you I will press that. Um, see, right, I have a great test. Someone just texted me and told me, Dr. Wilder, graduation is June 4. They're getting the child's age school to you, okay? That's, that's a great stat that got my back. Uh, Mr. Darby, um, I understand this and I'm probably the, I'm probably the one fitting one, but the major problem we've been having thus far with gangs have actually been on the, on the Hemingway end. And we have gang, students militant gangs at our school and high schools in town as well, but the major issue has been on the Hemingway side. And, um, as a matter of fact, I found out this morning as soon as I walked in the office, there was a major gang, like, event during the shag, I think it's a shag festival in Hemingway. Um, two of the students were arrested and taken in J.J. And, and I have to say that two, those two students were two that we've been working with and got to turn to the school back and forth, but now they're at B.G. And there's another student that they're trying to protect because, um, shooting occurred. I don't know what caused the shooting, but I do know it involved us because and personally, I'm embarrassed because what it says means that this community cannot have an event in peace. And our students, I take it as, you know, my children, my children, my great children, having firing guns in the air and all that foolishness. So, uh, there's a problem with gangs, but not to the point where I think going to impact the students at City Murray and King Street High School.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Dr. Wilder?
And again, I'm not everywhere under the bus, it's just that, that's fact, it's the fact.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, um, Dr. Wilder. And I do want to commend your technology team tonight because this setup has been the best thus far. Thank you so very much. We got audio, we got visual and, um, I think we had a great, great meeting. Thank you for all that you do, you and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Now, I told Ronnie, he would not embarrass me.
Thank you.
Let me ask one question of, of Dr. Wilder. Uh, you talk about the gang situation in the Hemingway area. Um, the question that Reverend Darby asked is, it also applies to the Hemingway area. What is being done to try to help us with that?
Uh, best we can do, um, is that Reverend Dix?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The best we can do is to encourage our students to let the administrative team know when they know something and it's, it's all really good at telling administrators, um, that the bond that for the more of our students to trust their dogs and live with someone. But really, it's a community problem and we need help. The community is the area. The community is the area that we need help with in terms of letting the police department know something's going on right now, that which is just trying to figure out a way. If you all know the layout of Hemingway High School, that road, that is a public road, that runs to right behind the high school, that area. And Dr. Richardson, they have to work overtime during recess time to make sure the students stay within the area, because we have persons coming through there trying to hand out drugs or initiate students, and then we have, it's a public road, so we can't close it. So those are the kind of issues that we have. We need help from the community. And according to Dr. Richardson and her team, it is a known fact that there are situations in Hemingway where these adults are actually selling drugs and alcohol out of their homes to students. Perfect example, a student left school one day last week in Hemingway, went to someone's house, came at the, slipped off campus, came back to school completely drunk and high on drugs. And if you all can recall, Reverend Darby, the first major project I did in coming to the district was fencing, when I saw how open Hemingway High School was, the first thing we did was what? Put that fence up to keep those students in, but they can slip out.
Yes, ma'am.
But the problem is, the community needs to help us.
Madam Chair, my chair.
Yes.
Just a comment. I did see a post where the community in Hemingway will be having a prayer, a different prayer service on Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m. at Burger King, and they're asking the community to please come out and just pray for our students, and pray for our students in the Hemingway community. So they are starting to make, they're starting as a community to come together.
What date is that?
So Wednesday?
This Wednesday?
Yes, Wednesday, March 30th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Burger King in Hemingway. And the contact person is Teresa Brooks.
What, you said it starts at 10?
Yes, ma'am, 10:00 a.m.
Okay, I will make sure the district representatives there, on Wednesday, my nephew that died a little while back, it can take us having a war in his memory, so I need to be there, but I will make certain that someone is at the Burger King supporting, I'll be direct to represent the district.
Thank you, Dr. Wilder. Any other comments? Do you want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight? I think we've had some great information. Representative Caesar McKnight has agreed to be on the agenda for our next board meeting, so he may have more information on other bills that are currently in the House. If nothing else, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. It's been moved and set in that meeting adjourned. All in favor, let it go be seen aye.
Aye.
Close us.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you.
The facts remain the same. Turn down the bass, push that button, and follow us. My name is T. Wah 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 wah.